All right, we're going to reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM. First order of business is Mr. Ben Poppy is going to have a discussion on the district's rating on the state financial integrity rating system of Texas.
Are you sure this works? Okay. Good evening, President Fealan, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Powell. This evening I'll be presenting the results of the 20th Annual School First Report. Since this is a public hearing, citizens will have the opportunity to comment at the conclusion. For these delivery, I've broken the presentation into three sections, and this is on pages seven through pages 23 of the board book. First, I'll provide a brief overview of what School First is. Second, we'll take a look at the composition of the annual financial management report, and finally, we'll review the Pasadena ISD rating. School First is essentially a report card of the district's financial condition. First is an acronym for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, developed by TEA in 1999 and put into practice beginning in fiscal year 2002. The report always lags a year behind, so the results I'm presenting to you this evening are based on the fiscal year 2022. The 20 performance indicators for rating year 2022 can be broken down into three categories that measure critical financial components, financial solvency, and financial competency. The indicators are rated differently, 1 through 4, 6, 16 through 17, and 20 are just yes and no answers with no points assigned. However, these are critical indicators dealing with the annual financial audit and compliance with debt agreements and government filings. A single negative response could cause immediate failure or decrease the maximum points overall. The other indicators deal with financial management, solvency, and competency, and are worth up to 10 points, except for question 19, which is worth five points each, for a maximum score of 100 points. Then the scoring rubric determines the status assigned to the district with a letter grade A through F. According to School First regulations, the district is required to have a public hearing each year within 60 days of TEA's release of the final rating, as well as issuing an annual financial management report. The report communicates the district's overall performance rating, as well as the rating of each of the 20 individual indicators based on the 21-22 fiscal year. The report also includes required disclosures. The district must disclose any gifts received from vendors over $250 and any business transactions between a board member or superintendent with the district. Additionally, we must provide information related to the superintendent's income. The superintendent's contract is available in the report. And finally, we are required to show reimbursements to board members and the superintendent. Almost all of the reimbursements are related to registration fees and travel associated with conferences with district-related events. We also have operating cost management, tax collections, cash management, budgetary planning, and financial allocations and awards, and additional transparency for our community. We have copies of the School First report and disclosures are available upon request. We're happy to report that Pasadena ISD received a 94 out of 100 points, earning a superior rating, or an A. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Board members, any questions?
Thank you.
Also, open to the public. Any members of the public would like to ask Mr. Poppy any questions? Thank you, Ben.
Great job, Ben.
Great job. And move on to special recognition.
All right, well, Board members, we're excited tonight because we have Amber McNeese here, our PE coordinator, who's going to be coming forward, and Elise Neff, instructional specialist for school health, who y'all both know very well, who will recognize several PISD campuses who have actually been named one of the America's Healthiest Schools by the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. So, take it away.
All right, thank you for having us tonight. The Alliance for a Healthier Generation honored 781 schools nationwide for prioritizing student, staff, and family health in the 2022-2023 school year. Schools earned this distinction by successfully meeting a rigorous set of criteria for serving healthier meals and snacks, getting students moving more, offering high-quality physical and health education, and empowering school leaders to become healthy role models. Bailey Elementary, Fisher Elementary, Red Bluff Elementary, South Houston Elementary, and Turner Elementary have gone above and beyond in adopting the whole-child best practices to advance the physical, mental, and social-emotional health of their staff and their students. Additionally, Fisher, Red Bluff, and Turner Elementarys were recognized at the America's Healthiest School Leaders Summit in Washington, DC this past October for earning a distinction in four or more of the nine categories. On behalf of the PE Health and Wellness Team, we would like to celebrate their wellness champions and the wellness teams from Bailey Elementary. Special thank you to each of their principals for supporting their wellness team's efforts: Karen Johnson, Blanca Roman, Tammy Hinton, Edna Zarzosa, and Jennifer Katz. Congratulations.
We just had pie, and we have the healthiest schools in front of us.
And it was good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for making me feel better. Okay, thank you. So, Board members, of course, we're excited also tonight to recognize one of our other family members. This is a statewide award, so we'd like to honor Blake Emmons, Director of Assessment, for a special award he received from the Texas Statewide Network of Assessment. And he was pretty sneaky. We didn't know about this until he was there getting the award. So, Donna, come forward and talk about this superstar.
All right, good evening, Board members and Dr. Powell. We are so excited to honor Blake Emmons, our Director of Assessment, for having received the prestigious President's Award from the Texas State Network of Assessment, RTSNAP. This is a professional organization that supports the needs of assessment professionals in Texas and aspires to develop a community of members who demonstrate knowledge, skills, and values to inspire leadership and collaboration through networking.
The President's Award is the highest honor awarded annually to members of the assessment community, and Blake has been awarded this great honor because of his commitment to outstanding service to the students and staff of Pasadena ISD, as well as his ability to form partnerships with other educational stakeholders in the assessment community throughout the state of Texas. We honor Blake Emmons for this outstanding achievement.
Yay.
Congratulations, absolutely.
And that is it for tonight, and we will come back next month with more student and staff recognitions.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I may we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel section has been, the first item on the personnel section has been pulled. We're going to move on to the second one. Consideration possible approval of the employee reclassification for the 2023-2024 school year.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Is there any discussion?
So, Board members, as you know, we have a longtime cabinet member retiring, and so there's been some movement of assignments and duties. So, that's what you're seeing here outlined, and part of that reclassification or reorganization that's taking place. We're going to miss Gloria Gallegos for all her amazing service to the school district. Gloria's back there. I see her, Ben, but we'll celebrate her later, but this happens to be with the fact that she's making that transition to enjoy life just a little bit more and not get up early every morning to serve the kids at PISD that she loves to do. So, again, this is all part of that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration possible approval of the renewal of the Employee Assistance Program, EAP, CSP number 20P-050LP, for a cost of $90,780.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the renewal of the onsite clinic, CSP number 20P-032LP, for a cost of $792,623 to be paid through the Health Fund.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Dr. Powell?
Yes.
Is this?
Absolutely. We have a great clinic. Many of our employees use it as their primary care physician. Dr. Hurtado is very popular among our staff and the additional professionals that work there as well. We have some nurse practitioners and others that take care of our employees very well, partnership with HCA and through Aetna. And I know Bobby's here with lots of data. Bobby, where you at? Talk about the visits real quick. Just come on up, because I think they would find this data incredibly beneficial as far as visits to the clinic.
Is it just one clinic? Didn't we have a few at one time?
So, at one time, we were able, through the insurance, to use some other sites. Clearly, they weren't our clinics, but they were satellite sites, but it is just now the one clinic.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Board and Dr. Powell. So, we have over about 6,400 employees that used the clinic last year, and we're probably going to be over that number for this year, so it's very well-used.
Does that not benefit us to have another facility or two opened up?
I think the cost analysis that the insurance has done, based on us having the previous satellite sites, is that this is our best financial, I guess you would say, scenario at this time, but we continue to look at that. Of course, we have the telemedicine that's very highly used as well by our employees, and so that's a nice service that we provide through our insurance plan also. But we'll look at that for sure each year, see if it's cost-effective.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration possible approval of the renewal for self-funded health plan-ASO medical product services, CSP number 21P-016LP, to Aetna Life Insurance Company for a cost of $1,765,874 for fiscal year 2024.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration possible approval of the renewal of medical and prescription stop-loss coverage self-funded health plan, CSP number 23P-008LL, to Aetna Life Insurance Company for a cost of $2,673,573 to be paid through the Health Fund.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
What is the stop-loss?
When we have those huge claims, they're, of course, helping our fund stay healthy, but it definitely has come in use throughout the years, whether it's a preemie baby or someone who's going through a tragic health experience, to help with making sure we can cover those needs that our families have.
I guess because I'm reading or I'm seeing in here where it talks about the prescription or the RX stop coverage. Is that a?
So, there's some prescriptions, and I don't know, Bobby, or is Bonnie here tonight? Bonnie, do you want to talk a little? Okay, we got our friend from Gallagher. Come on down. That way, we can make sure we have the best person answering the question. If you want to introduce.
This is Derek Echo from Gallagher. He's one of our consultants that help us make good decisions and make sure we have the best plans possible for our employees.
Hi, Derek Echo, Gallagher Benefit Services. Stop-loss insurance is catastrophic coverage insurance over every individual that is covered on the plan. So, up to a set amount, up to $500,000, you carry the risk as your employer does. Anything above that number is covered by the stop-loss insurance. It's catastrophic. Your RX and your medical are both bundled into that coverage, so both are part of it. So, every dollar that's spent on whether it's Humira or whether it's a surgery, all go into that bundled rate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for what you do, sir.
Certified Personnel is for information only. Support Personnel also for information only. We're going to move to the Education section. We have a presentation by Mr. Rolando Merchant, Director of Bilingual, and I know I slaughtered his name.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Powell and ladies and gentlemen. We are, do I have a clicker?
And they've got it in their books, too, so they've got a copy in front of them.
So, we're going to have a quick overview on highlights on our program evaluation from last school year for the bilingual and ESL services. Thank you.
There's the clicker.
We love technology and we're in education, so we can improvise all the time.
That's right.
So, the agenda is general, we're just going to talk about general data of the program, plus some highlights in results, both academically, language development in English, and second language development for our students in the two-way dual-language program, as well as an update on the waivers and exceptions that we filed last school year. So, in terms of general information, we had last year over 17,000 students, which represent 35% of our student population, with more than 20 languages spoken in the district. You can see in the pie chart, hardly, almost half of our students are participating in the transitional bilingual program. Then, a little bit over 3% of our, third part of our population is receiving services through ESL program. Then, we have a 10%, which is a very high percentage, of students whose parents deny services, and that's going to be highlighted also in the results. That's something we are working as a district to solve. Our emerging bilinguals participating in the two-way dual-program represents 6%. In comparison with the state, the blue lines are the Pasadena and the orange lines are the state level. When we're comparing programs, so we are kind of equal in ESL and the two-way dual program, we are over the percentage of the state in the transitional bilingual late exit, but that will switch gradually to the one-way dual that we already implemented, started implementing this year. And as you can see, the parent denials, we are over double the percentage of the state level. So, academic progress. How is this program serving our students? New chapter 89, which is our regulation, is asking us to distinguish more participation. So, instead of taking the aggregate of EB's, let's see where they are depending on the type of participation program and the student groups. So, what we noticed here is that our all-students is the blue line that is in the middle. We are between 60 and 80% percentage in English test, in reading, start approaches level. And then, we have our emerging bilingual students are in the orange as a whole group. Then you will notice on top of those, the performance of kids who actually were already reclassified, meaning they already exited the program, so they are part or product of the bilingual education. And as you can see, the percentages are between the 90 and the 100% in all grade levels. So, it's been very successful at that level. This is for the reading. The math is, then we have, the math is kind of the same situation. Now, for program participation, now we are disaggregating the groups, and we noticed that our transitional bilingual kids are like in the middle, but our ESL group starts kind of like dropping a little bit after fifth and sixth grade. That's where we have the highest number of newcomers, and they're still held accountable for the same academic responsibilities that English speakers. So, it's a little bit expected that dip. However, I want to point out that you will notice also the parent denials in that blue line are very close to those kids. So, they initially outperform and are kind of like at the same level of the other students, but gradually, their performance decays. So, that's a problem we need to solve in terms of parent denials. We need to, our community, to understand the benefits of the program. Now, some highlights in terms of academic results, right? Comparing this spring 2023 with spring 2023, we have that our kids scored higher this last year. Our emerging bilingual students, in the approaches, are all for sixth-grade reading, English I and history, US history, and of course, exams.
Can you go back to the previous slide? I'm kind of...
This one?
Another one before that.
Yes.
That one.
Yes, sir.
Wait, no. No, you're going forward.
This one?
I think you're going forward. On the parent denial, it's showing that as they get older...
Correct.
Now, is, have they been in the program, or it's because...
They have never been in the program, or they stopped attending the programs because parents decide to waive the services. So, these kids are immersed in just English classes without the linguistic support that emerging bilingual students receive in programs. Does that make sense?
It does, and I guess my concern is that we are above the state, and this is always something that we struggle with, so...
So, that's part of what we're trying to do as part of the strategic plan that we implemented with the one-way dual. It's also kind of like understanding, and we're working on marketing next year's projects, to get families informed about the benefits of participating and creating a more aggressive campaign of information of what is so important for emerging bilingual students to be part of a program that is designed to meet the linguistic, academic, and affective needs.
Okay, and I guess the concern that I have, and what you said, was next year, I want to take care of it now.
Yes, so that's kind of where we are going on. So, next year, I mean, in next year's report, I'm hoping that we start looking at a, like a decrease in that number, because we're working this year on those, so we will not see those effects until this year, school year is over.
So, as y'all proved, we're training teachers to be ready, and then we can let parents know, yeah.
Working with our LPAC administrators, who are our direct contact with these parents, in really providing them with resources to inform parents whenever they're making that decision.
But currently, even when you have an LPAC and a parent is doing a parent denial, there's administrators and staff reaching out to those families to talk about those benefits.
Yes, that's our standard process.
I guess it's across the board. Pasadena is great, and we have great resources, and we do great things. We just have a hard time...
Amazing.
...putting it out there for everybody to know how great we really are.
That's true. So... So, we're working on that, yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, we're working with the communications department in that area, too.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And that's second to none.
Okay, so, other good news, right? Last year, comparison with last year, at the mid-levels, we also had increase in over 10 percentage points in sixth-grade reading and English I EOC. However, we still have some gaps, as we saw in the graphs, right? So, that's something that we're going to be taking care of. But our EB's outperform all students together in third grade, reading and mathematics in all levels, in fourth-grade mathematics, and the approaches and master levels in English, and in fifth-grade mathematics. So, the kids are doing really well in the program. In terms of the first two years of reclassification, right, that is, the kid met the criteria to be called now English proficient, and so the kids really outperform the all-students category. That was the top lines that you saw in the graphs. They are doing outstanding at all-grade levels, all kind of performing levels. Now, for our two-way dual-language students, they, again, outperform the all-students groups in all-grade levels and all subject areas, but more than five points. And in the fourth-grade math, it was over 35 points difference, so it is really outstanding results. They also score, 100% of them score approaches for English II and Algebra I, and more than 90% score needs for seventh-grade reading, eighth-grade reading, English I and II, and Algebra I. So, the results of our two-way dual-program continue to be outstanding. If you remember the presentation, what we did, the one-way dual, is really mimicking what the research says. Comparing them to see a little bit of what are the opportunities to grow, right? We have to, we're working hard on that. So, we need to close some gaps in fourth-grade reading, in fifth-grade English, in sixth-grade English reading, and in Algebra I for just general EB's, and seventh-grade reading and sixth-grade reading math. Now, in terms of English language development of our students measured by Telpass, just a reminder, the highest score that a student can get is advanced high, marked as an H, right? So, in comparison with last year, our students in listening and speaking in those grade levels grew, the same way in reading in grades three, four, and five, and speaking and reading in grades seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12. So, we had a lot of growth in language development. A key point is that last year, the writing test for Telpass changed for grades second to 12. Before, it was done by the teachers. Now, it's through the computer, and we noticed a drop, and only 10% of our students are meeting that threshold of proficiency, which is a little bit contradictory when we look at the results, right? So, I just wanted to compare this because in terms to be reclassified, the kid has to have advanced high in all the domains. And in the writing domain, that was the new assessment, we had terrible drops. You see, the blue lines are last year's 2022 results. The orange ones are 2023. So, we have huge drops in those areas. Before, the teacher was the one who scored based on a collection of writing processes that happened in the class. Now, it's a one-time shot in the computer for second grade and up. So, that's also affecting our composite levels, and this is important because that's going to be the new metrics to determine if the kids can reclassify. So, we saw a drop in those, especially in fifth and sixth grade, which is historically, because we are a late transition, the time when our kids reclassify. So, that, even though that happened, we were able to reclassify five more kids than last year, so yay, we're doing it, right? We're doing it, and we have to celebrate that because those kids are successful. Now, we also measure in second language for two-way dual students, right? We want them to be bilingual, so we need to measure those. So, currently, we are only, we were measuring only the reading levels at elementary, but we are now in a process in partnership with the University of Colorado to try to determine our own zones of bilingual development that goes beyond elementary. The results in the second language are a little confusing and unstable, but that's also part of the reason why we're trying to abandon the reading levels, because those depend really heavily on how the teacher scores the assessment. So, we're looking for other options that are more objective in measuring that second-language progress. Now, waivers and exceptions. Whenever we don't have certified teachers, which we are in a shortage of teachers, we have to report those cases, right? So, for bilingual teachers, bilingual certified teachers, we needed 130 teachers last school year that we didn't get, so that was an increase of 11% in comparison to 2022. That implies that 1,640 students are in alternative language programs. 95 for those students are at the middle-school level, our fifth and sixth-grade centers. We don't have enough teachers at those levels. Now, ESL waivers, we also increased 46%, so that's a huge move in the other direction. But out of those 115, we were able to train 112, and we are, we really filed last month this year, and we were able to turn around. Now, we had like a 50% increase on the certified teachers, so we are in the right part for ESL. Professional development, we're committed to keep growing our teachers and our community, so we have a lot of topics on training that has resulted in... So we have a lot of topics on training that has resulted in over 11,000 participants in different opportunities of training throughout the year. And we cannot do all this job without a huge support team, that is our specialists, our teachers, our coaches, our instructional, and instructor directors and administrators, and the support of the board. So any questions or comments?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very good.
Lot of success.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Consideration possible approval of the district improvement plan for the 2023-2024 school year.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the campus improvement plans for the 2023-2024 school year.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to the campuses for the hard work that went into coming up with the plans, and they're all look great.
Yes, ma'am.
All good for kids.
A lot for the board to go through, for sure, when you got 68 to review. And I don't know, Scott Harrell here? He's the. Everybody point. Scott's kind of the person that corrals the cats and gets them all turned in. So thank you, Scott.
Any other discussion? Scott, don't ever get in trouble because they ratted you out. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2023-2024 high school graduation dates, times, and locations.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the lease agreement with NRG Stadium for the 2024 passing independent school district high school graduations.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the school health advisory council, SHAC, membership for 2023-2024 school year.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
They do a lot of hard work, and we see the benefits of it every single year. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely right. Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the memorandum of understanding with the University of Texas MD Anderson Cancer Center to allow Milstead Middle School to participate in the Aspire Dissemination Project.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Kind of what we've talked about, board members, of everything we can do to raise awareness, not only for our students, but our parents as well, in preventing students from taking part, whether it's vaping or smoking, keeping healthy lifestyles.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval for the passing high school and passing memorial high school CTE students, FFA members, to participate in the Cattlemen's Congress Show in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, January 7th through the 11th, 2024.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez.
Second.
Second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion?
It's a wonderful opportunity for the kids. They'll go to the Cattlemen's Museum.
They're shaking their head. Mick is, Mrs.
It was last year.
So maybe.
Love it.
All right.
Excellent.
It's a wonderful opportunity.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Looks like you aren't going to Oklahoma.
And now you're going to sneak out.
At least send pictures.
Yeah, send pictures. Consideration possible approval of keynote speaker for gifted and talented staff development creativity potpourri on January 25th, 2024, in the amount of $500 from local funds.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Never thought I'd say potpourri at a board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Student achievements for information only. We're going to move on to the policy section.
Good achievements.
Yes, ma'am. Consideration possible revision to the CFB local accounting inventories policy.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial section. Consideration and possible approval of budget amendment for October 23, 2023.
I move we approve the budget amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Yes.
One of them for vandalism.
Well, we do have vandalism, unfortunately. So I wouldn't say that we have, and I have to knock on wood somewhere. Do we have any wood? That we have an excessive amount, but time to time, we do have those that make poor decisions. Sometimes after hours, more so is what we see, and Chief is shaking his head. But yes, more so during after hours or weekends. Sometimes our students, sometimes not, that are doing things to our facilities that are not good for them.
Shame on them.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Fell asleep at the wheel. We had an item that was pulled. We're going to move on to the operations section. Consideration possible approval of the design development phase for the 2022 bond program, New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan.
We have a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. With me today from Texas Arcadis is Danny Brewster and Maria Fernandez.
And a very, very, very good group from the school at Williams. It's been hand in hand with us during the design. You guys back there, thank you, guys.
So on behalf of Texas Arcadis and our consultants, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to present to you the design development for Williams Elementary. Special thanks also to Rhonda Palmer. I don't think she's here tonight. Kevin Fornoff, Brian Hanson. Thank you, guys, for your participation and your guidance. And as Danny said, Christine, thank you for your team. Just to recap of what we're working with, working on, is in 2022, the bond package was passed, and four elementary schools were approved to be built. Williams Elementary is one of those projects. The existing school was built in 1959 for 662 students. The new school will be designed for 750 students at around 108,000 square feet. Now, we've had some changes since the last time we met in SD. One of them is a new site. The old site that we were trying to design on, which is where the existing school is today, and that eight-acre site just wasn't enough to allow us to build a cost-efficient school. So the new site is located where you see there, at the corner of Queens and Allen Genoa, next to Queens Elementary, I mean, Queens Intermediate School. It's plenty of room, 15 acres site, plenty of room to fit our new school. Now, whenever you design for a new site, sometimes you have to change the building footprint. Luckily, we designed a compact floor plan that fits perfectly onto this site. So we had, we didn't have to make any changes. We did have to make some changes to the parking and entrance, but that's, that's what we'll show you here next. So on the site, at the corner of that triangular piece, is the existing detention pond. The detention pond has 2.5 acres that we may have to expand, but the building fits perfectly onto that site. We're utilizing the existing entrances from Allen Genoa, which helps with that site. The car stacking that you see there to the north, I don't think I have a pointer on this thing. But just there to the north, there's enough parking entrance and stacking for 122 cars. The parking lot holds 115 cars plus four service cars in the service entrance and three buses. I should recap some of the challenges we had for the site. One of them is the existing detention we have to work with, of course. It's in the city of Houston for permitting, which is a little difficult, as everyone knows. The silo elevation part of the site is in a 500-yard floodplain, so we have to work with some elevation issues and the traffic control with Queens Intermediate being nearby. The floor plan, as I said, didn't change much. Good for that. So what we see here is the, you see three distinct pods up on the north and west side of the floor plan. The first pod to your right is the pre-K. The middle pod is kindergarten, and the left west side pod is first grade. The center core of that footprint, we have support services, special needs, music, science. In the library is the purple entrance there at the front. To the immediate right is the administration wing. In the pink area that you see there to the south, that's the cafeteria, gym, and kitchen. Now, in between the classroom pods, we have learning courtyards that we are currently designing. It's still in the process of being designed, but we have some images to show you as placeholders. On the second floor, we have second, third, and fourth grades. Once again, in the center of those classroom pods, we have support functions, large group instruction, peer facilitator, and resource. This is a typical classroom pod. Each pod is pretty much identical. There's two entrances into the pod that can be locked down in case of emergencies. Each pod has its own support functions, mechanical, IDF, custodial, and storage. There are three classroom, I'm sorry, six classrooms within each pod. All classrooms have views to the exterior. There's a multipurpose space, which Danny could probably show you with his pointer, that can be shared by all the classrooms. The specific location of that multipurpose space is that in case there's any student population increase, we can easily convert that into a classroom. The next slide shows you the, see, this is the entrance, the floor panel on the right, shows the first set of doors where some visitor would be buzzed in. They would be captured into the secured vestibule. There'll be a window there where they can communicate why they're there. And if they're approved, they'll be buzzed into the second entrance. The, there's a restroom there close to the reception area for parents that need to use the facilities. The attendance is nearby, counselors, and of course, the clinic. The next slide is just more information about the administration wing, showing the principal area, conference rooms, workrooms, and such. Everything has been designed to meet the needs of the principal and her staff. The front facade highlights the library, of course, you see there. There's a structural piece that's a tree-like structure. It's decorative as well as functional. It helps provide shade into the library. The wing right there to the immediate right is where the administration is. So all the administration windows have a full view to the front entrance, so they can monitor who is coming. This is a very one-of-a-kind design for Williams. It gives Williams its own identity. They're easily recognizable by this design. We have learning courtyards. These are just placeholders, but we're showing these courtyards in between classroom rings. We're planning for those to be instructional spaces, as well as places where the kids can go out and have, you know, a little relaxation time. There's larger courtyard there at the corner of the footprint. And once again, these are just placeholders. It's a work in progress. The pod entries are identified with this graphic here. This is the first grade pod, the entrance. One of the entrances is there to the right. The other one's just around the corner to the left. The classroom corridors will be using vinyl tile, colorful vinyl tile that the design team has selected. Students will be able to line up in the corridors based on the color that's on the floor. This helps them circulate around the pods. This is a design of the multipurpose space. It's designed to be collaborative as well as beautiful. There's breakout spaces where students can gather with their instructors. There's group spaces where students can do a little project there on the board, and a variety of seating. This is a tackboard surface that we designed for the needs of the teachers. They do a lot of tacking of material on the walls. So this material is very durable. It doesn't puncture, and so this will be there for a long time. It will be in every pod, yes.
It would be a tackable surface for student work.
For student work, right.
And it may end up being a different design or shape or?
Yep. Like I said, this is a design process, and, you know, things are moving along. The design never really stops, right? Through the construction phase, it's always improving. So this is a pause, not a final. The next slide shows the interior space of the library. That wall where you see that tree structure, that's the wall facing the vestibule entrance. So as people enter the school, they can look into the library to see what's happening. There's learning stairs there at the corner where students can grab a book and go read on the stairs. That tree has a little cubby in it, so students can grab a book and go read inside the tree. They can look in and out from the library, yes. Well, at this point, you would already pass the secured vestibule, so you'd be in the school.
Not actually from the outside.
No, not from the outside.
That makes sense.
So this is a view out from the learning stairs. You see the tree structure there on your left. This is a view looking to the west. That wall there, that graphic that's on the wall there to the left, that just depicts what's happening at the earth layers. It's a fun little graphic. There's some little wormholes there where students can grab a book and go read inside that little cubbies.
I think that that design is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I gravitate to that, or they can present, have a class?
Yeah, it's a multifunctional space. It provides a lot of areas where students can break out and do their own little reading or in, you know, in groups.
You like those cubby holes, too?
Love them.
Because you've been in a cubby hole before.
Yeah, a few of them. They're fun. They're always being used.
He got him May Smith.
So as we continue, we're always looking at code, making sure that we're compliant with the code. The program spaces, we comply with all the program spaces provided by the district. The estimated cost is between $28 and $38 million. The budget is for $33,625. The project schedule, currently, we're, of course, at DD Board presentation. The proposal date, we're thinking will be September 24th, 2024, and we can start construction in April of 2026. I'm sorry, start construction in October 23, 2024, and complete, complete in 2026. Sorry.
About killed my superintendent.
So this is just to show you that we've been meeting constantly with the design team. We've met several times with Rhonda and Kevin and his team, and we're moving the design along. So this is a fun little graphic. Well, we'll do some fly-throughs and interior views here in a minute, soon as Danny can So this is a fly-through through one of the pods. I believe this is the first grade pod. You'll enter through the secure doors, enter into the corridor. See the classrooms on your right. When you make a left, you enter into the restroom spaces. More classrooms there on the left. Now, some of the colors there in the multipurpose space may change as you change pods, just to change it up just a little bit. Next video we have is of the exterior. There you see the library entrance. To the immediate right is the administration ring. And the first classroom pod comes into view, pre-K on the bottom, second grade on the As we move around the back, some of the courtyards will start coming into view. Once again, these courtyards are placeholder. We're still getting that fully designed. Larger courtyard comes into view there. This site does provide a lot more play area for the students as well. There's play areas to the south and north of the site. Here you see the bus drop-off canopy leading the students into the building. That open yard area there that comes into view, that's the service yard. The immediate right of the service yard is the cafeteria, and we plan to add some outdoor seating for the cafeteria. And just to the right of the cafeteria is the gymnasium. The site is perfectly located, so from the corner of Queens and Elgin Noah, you'll be able to see this lit up. There you go. One of the slides had a QR code attached to it where the audience can take their camera and click it, but I'm not sure if we can do that without, you know, with these screens down. You may not be able to, not everyone may be able to get that angle to get it. But if you take that QR code, you'll be able to see some of the interior spaces of the library. There you go. Danny's showing you there. You can pan it, go up, down. If you'd like, you can see me after the presentation. You can scan my copy.
Excellent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve, let's see, the design development phase for the Bond Program New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project. Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any other discussion? Hold on. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think this is a wonderful move for Williams. I lived in that neighborhood for 40 years. My children went to Williams Elementary School, all three of them, and it needs to be moved to better serve the students of our district. I'm just so happy that this is being done.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Hold on. You lived there 40 years, you're 38. How is that possible?
Any other discussion?
Staff is hearing this for the first time, so they're, interesting information that they're getting that it's going to be moved to a new site, so it's exciting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration possible approval of construction contract with CITIC Omni Services LLC for structural site demolition services at 1515 Cherry Brook Lane in the amount of $418,200.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
To board members, we promised to get everyone out of the building before we demolish it. Right, Kevin?
Right.
So Johnny here? We got to get this one finished to get everybody in it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of design services agreements to create architects for the softball complex replacement project in the amount of $1,115,543, included with a total project budget of $19 million and fund balance request.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Or Ms. Morgan? They sound a lot alike. Any discussion?
So this is exciting, since we're moving Williams smack dab on top of the softball field, we got to move the softball field, so here we go.
Any other discussion?
It'd be good for everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 84, for the new Thompson Intermediate School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $6,500.
No move. We'll take that credit every day.
Yes, ma'am. Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 50056, for the new maintenance, operations, and warehouse facility project in the amount of $134,460.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
That's a star in the crown of the school district.
Really is, and they're very deserving of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of change order number 01 for the 2022 Bond Program Auxiliary Stadium Track Replacement Project in the amount of $14,687.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of amendment number four for the district's current master gas services contract with the General Land Office, GLO.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration possible approval of resolution to declare district property as surplus property for the purposes of soliciting bids for sale.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a construction contract with Gary Mechanical LP for the 2022 Bond HVAC BAS Replacement BMCS Group One project in the amount of $4,649,741.
No move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of resolution declaring the intentions to reimburse project expenditures in the amount of $20,500.
No move.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Construction updates are for information only. We're going to move along to the miscellaneous section. Public comments according to the BED Local related to topics not listed on the agenda. 30 minutes allotted allotment. This portion of the public comments is for speakers who are addressing topics not listed on tonight's agenda. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual, student, and/or employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable passing ISD board policy, DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along with those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and, in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comments portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, this admonishment goes for positive or negative remarks. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Fernandez has agreed to be my timekeeper, keeping time, and will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. We have five speakers. Let me make sure everybody's here. Ms. Joanna Chavaria, are you here? Yes, ma'am. Pastor Louis Cabrera, are you here, sir? Perfect. Pastor Richard Vega, are you here? Perfect. Chaplain Kathy Pratt, are you here? Yes, ma'am. And Rocky Malloy, are you here? Perfect. Everybody's here. Fantastic. We will go ahead and start with Ms. Joanna Chavaria.
And it's this podium here?
This podium over here, yes, ma'am. Your time will start when you start speaking.
Okay. Let me put this right here. My name is Joanna Duñez. I'm a program coordinator with UT Health Youth Aware of Mental Health Program, or YAM. I'm addressing the board today because we are in a mental health crisis with our youth. With YAM being a sub-initiative of T-Chat, we aim to come in to provide our youth, sorry, excuse me, a better understanding of mental health, provide coping skills and resources, which will ultimately reduce the number of T-Chat counseling referrals for non-emergent scenarios. YAM is an evidence-based program delivered in classrooms to eighth to 12 graders at no cost to you. Currently, we know that mental illness develops in 50% of affected individuals by age 14. In addition, suicide is the second-leading cause of death in ages 10 to 24. 19% of teens reported that in the last year they seriously considered suicide, and 9% of youth reported that they have attempted suicide. If the children are future, then it can't be stressed enough how important mental health education is for this age group. YAM is a global program that came to the U.S. in 2016. Since then, the Texas YAM teams have served over 40,000 students. Now, we are continuing our mission to spread YAM all over Texas. I've done a few stats in a short period of time, but I'm asking you to only remember one, one in six. In 2019, one in six students made a suicide plan. When you go back to work or if in a classroom setting with students, I ask that you remember that one in six. YAM is a student-led universal prevention program that is designed for all students regardless of mental health risk status. Our program is a five-session mental health promotion program delivered over three or five weeks by a certified YAM instructor and assistant. Youth enjoy this program because we create a safe space and we have the freedom to discuss topics that are important to them. We have attended Pasadena's Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk two years in a row and have heard many parents and school staff cry out for our program to be in your schools. Without the approval at the district level, we are unable to reach the schools that are crying out. The numbers for YAM are quite impressive. We have evidence to prove that if we do YAM with 91 students, we will prevent one new case of suicide prevention, excuse me, suicide ideation, and one new case of suicide attention. When do we start acting towards prevention instead of scrambling for intervention after one of our precious youths had been lost? As a concerned man in myself, I advocate other minorities that have felt the weight of this youth mental health crisis. I will be available after this meeting to speak with anyone who is interested or has any further questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we do have, just for you to be aware, a mental health partnership with Harris Center with the T-Chat. We're very used to that resource. I'm very appreciative of that resource. I recommend you reach out to Robin Harold so that she can review the curriculum and work with you as far as getting information. It's good to know about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, gee. Can't leave your phone.
Where's his phone?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Good evening, and thank you, board and superintendent. My name is Richard Vega. I'm also Pastor Vega. I'm a community leader as well as a chaplain. And I come to you tonight talking about the chaplain's bill that you guys have rejected to have allowed chaplains here in Pasadena ISD. I'd like to address your response, Mr. Feeling, to myself. I sent all you guys an email, and you responded, and I thank you for responding, sir. And I know y'all's heart is to serve our students just as well as y'all know me. My heart is to serve our students and our faculties and parents as well. Again, I have Pastor Nick here. He's also the campus pastor at CT Church there on Fairmont. Now, you had mentioned in there about unlicensed religious chaplains to work in the mental health roles. That is correct. In fact, you should have some handouts. Our Constitution of the United States actually protects us against that. That's why it's labeled that in the writings of the bill. It also talks about how chaplains, how we as chaplains receive trainings how to treat trauma and how to bring techniques to those that are dealing with life crisis. We know that all counselors in Pasadena ISD are academic counselors and not LPCs. Chaplains have the same trainings as LPCs. It is very important to understand that right now LPCs in the state of Texas, which is licensed professional counselors, right now there's 5,000 students to one counselor, which means there's a massive waiting list. We need chaplains in our schools. There's no doubt about that. This is a resource for our faculty, our students, and parents all across district-wide. Also, right now, currently, our peer-to-peer that we have in place sends our students to the Montrose Center to be able to speak to peers. Now, I'm not sure how that actually works, but I could probably say that our kids are probably very different from the Montrose kids. You want me? And so here's what I'll tell you really quick. Right now, the United States chaplain, I mean, the Navy had put out that there was a high suicide rates that has happened this year. You know what their response was? They hired an addition. They hired an additional 3,000 chaplains. We have chaplains in the Army and the police departments, fire departments, prisons, airports, Congress, in the State House, in the State Senate. You know where we don't have them? Here in Pasadena. We need chaplains to come alongside faculty to help. We have resources that can benefit faculty, parents, and students. It is important for us to open up this resource that will not cost the district anything, that this is an additional funding, additional help for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So, as Mr. Vega, the response that you got, I just want to say a few things because we've partnered on a variety of things and we still welcome the partnership, absolutely. And thank you for your support of our students. The 5,001, I just want to make sure everybody knows that's not in Pasadena ISD because we have school counselors where we are not only providing academic counselors but mental health and crisis counselors here in Pasadena ISD. We're taking money out of fund balance. So the topic you bring up is a response to our state legislatures who are not doing their job, period. And I'll just say that for a fact because the serious issue of funding, this is not a solution. It's not a Band-Aid to it, and they need to address that first. We are open to the partnerships. We hosted the largest field of faith right here in Pasadena at our stadium. Other districts were not doing that. Churches were there, pastors were there. They're very supportive of the event. We're going to be partnering this month with Sagemont, Asbury, also South Main Baptist, as well as you and many of the great things that you're doing with our schools and with our students and their families. And we want to continue to do that. We're not going to put chaplains on our payroll based on that vote or on our employee rosters right now. But again, the state needs to step up and do their job and address school funding and not tie it to a voucher and not tie it to something that it should not be tied to. This is about children and children's lives and moving forward and their success. And we will do what we need to do here in this district. Just like you saw the ESL program and the Bilegal program, we pilot things in here in Pasadena ISD and we get lots of parent input. We don't let a state law or state mandate decide what's best for our parents or what's best for our students. So we still want to partner. We're still open to it. This board is a board of faith. This board, you know them personally. This is a board that wants best for kids, but they want parent input. They don't want to be pushed or made to do things and especially when it doesn't line up with what right now we're trying to achieve here in Pasadena ISD, and that's a positive outcome for all students. So we'll continue with our CIS, our crisis support, our mental health. We talked about T-Chat with the young lady that came up about YAM, and we're very interested. We still want our religious partners like we've always had, and we want to work with our families, get their input, get their feedback, and keep moving forward with what the community wants. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're going to continue the conversation.
Yeah, the CIS failed me personally. When my son died, not one of your six counselors reached out to any of my three kids. None of them. So if they failed me, who else are they going to fail? So this is just additional help. I'm just, this is just additional help. So I have a personal, this has happened to me personally. When we lost my son, had three kids in this school district, not one of your six from the CIS reached out to my children.
Well, and again, I apologize for that. Our school counselors are not part of CIS, but that is part of a program. And if that didn't happen, I wish we would have had that conversation. I know your son, he was a great young man. He went to school with my daughter, and that was a huge loss for that community. And we talked about it with the administration at Doby High School. So I apologize, and I still pray for you and your family for that loss.
I thank you. And I do thank you guys.
Thank you, sir.
But I just want you to understand that we, we want this.
Yes, sir.
We need it in our communities.
We will continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Louis Cabrera.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Luis Cabrera. I'm a state director for a pastors coalition statewide here in Texas. And I'm a former chaplain and a former youth pastor. And as a former youth pastor, I have seen the huge benefits of providing immeasurable guidance to kids of all ages. Especially today as our next generation is being bombarded with negative social media influences and disinformation. Chaplains play a vital role in a school setting for several reasons. Number one, spiritual and emotional support. Chaplains provide spiritual guidance, emotional support, counseling to students, staff, and parents and their families. They often, and they're often there to lend a listening ear, offer comfort during challenging times, and promote overall well-being. Point number two, they provide moral and ethical guidance. Do we need that today? Chaplains provide, promote and reinforce moral values and ethical behavior within the school community. They help students navigate difficult decisions, develop a strong moral compass, and contribute to a positive school culture. Point number three, they provide religious education and understanding. Chaplains offer many different types of education and facilitate inner faith dialogue, helping students to develop an understanding and appreciation for different religious and spiritual beliefs. And they, this fosters a sense of tolerance, inclusivity, and respect for diversity. And the last point, they provide crisis and trauma response. In times of crisis or trauma, who do you think responded during the school shooting of Uvalde? It wasn't these special counselors. The state sent, the state sent 200 chaplains to the community. Not counselors, not a trauma team. 200 counselors were sent by the state of Texas to the school shooting of Uvalde in May of 2022. So as you see, the importance of having chaplains in our schools. So board, please reconsider this vote that we need chaplains in every part of society because it reaffirms them. It helps them grow, especially in this time that kids are confused, they don't know who they are. So I please ask you to reconsider this vote. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Chaplain Kathy Pratt? Kathy?
For having me. My name is Kathy Pratt, and I am a chaplain for the Pasadena Police Department. I'm here to speak on behalf of chaplains being allowed in the schools. Most people associate chaplains with the military, and that is one of the big arguments online against chaplains in our school, that our students are not deployed to the other side of the world. They are not isolated, and they are not in a battlefield. But they are. Students in the United States face a battle every day when they go to school. They wonder, in spite of all this fantastic security, if there will be a shooting on their campus. They wonder if they will be struck by a drunk driver on the way home. They wonder if they will be sexually assaulted and strangled by someone they thought they could trust. They face bullies and ever-growing peer pressure. They face a battlefield. We don't need politicians in Washington raising our children, but we also don't need the internet to raise them. Our schools today do not need any more testing. Our schools need a daily pledge of allegiance. Our schools need daily prayer. Our schools need spiritual guidance for students, teachers, and staff. Our schools need chaplains. Not to be the main guidance for a child, not the main spiritual guidance, but to fill in the gaps when mom is tired because she has to work two jobs to buy groceries with inflation, when dad oversleeps because he has to work another turnaround to pay the bills and can't take the family to church. Chaplains are not the pastor to the children, but they are a source of spiritual strength. Chaplains are also clergy affiliated with a church or churches. Children overhear our issues, and they bring them to school. Chaplains have a network ready to meet needs from a yard in code violation to paying an overdue water bill, from assistance in setting up a budget to someone to help rewrite a resume for a better job, from a parent's night out childcare to a family movie night on the lawn. The chaplain is also a person who does not judge the students. They do not have to do anything to earn the acceptance of a chaplain. Students will be encouraged and built up daily by a chaplain. They will be prayed for and prayed with. They will have a safe adult to go to when they have emotions bigger than them and they don't know how to process it. Parents will have the assurance that their children are prayed for and that someone besides them sees their child a beautiful person with so much to give. Pasadena students and faculty deserve chaplains. Please reconsider your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Rocky Malloy?
Disclaimer, I'm a Ball High grad, so don't any points against me for that. I'm also a founder and director of the National School Chaplain Association. We have over 28,000 schools with chaplains. That represents a database of 25 million people. I was the lead expert witness on this bill, and I can tell you, the state of Texas is doing a great job. That data, that pamphlet right there, 560 pages, was the evidence manual the state used to pass this legislation. Our data shows up to 37% increase in graduations when there's chaplains full-time on a campus, up to 80% reduction of teen pregnancies. No suicide in the last 13 years in a database of 25 million students and the adults in their life. When you voted no, you put yourself at jeopardy legally. Here's why. Voting no means, all these pastors that give you services now because chaplains are not defined in the law, means that you said no to faith. That means when a non-faith service is allowed access, you've opened yourself up to litigation. The safe vote is yes on chaplains, which will allow you to define what they are and if you want volunteer chaplains, what you have right now, but you get to define that. Finally, you state that your number one priority is safety. In our database, we prove schools with chaplains are safer. Thank you, sir. So voting no means a decision to have resources available to prevent suicide, to prevent mass shootings, and to have a safer campus for everyone and turn it down. That doesn't seem like a wise decision to me. I would appreciate your reconsideration to have a safer campus, less suicides, less pregnancies. The state of Texas has made that possible. I will add that it's polling extremely high with parents, and 17 states is following this legislation. It's become a national movement,